Good morning. We'll call to order this meeting of Community Emergency Services Committee. Follow me, please. Holy Father, thank you for all of the blessings that you've bestowed upon us, signs of your grace and love. We thank you for all of our first responders, law enforcement and military who keep order and maintain the promise. We ask you to come dwell with us today as we consider matters of importance to our community. Amen. Right. Pledge, please.
My pledge is to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, my nation, God, invisible liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Reese walked in line of sight. I was almost going to pledge to her. Okay, we have quorum here. And approval of minutes of the previous meeting, gentlemen.
Move to accept.
Second.
So moved. Mr. Johnson, we have any additions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, with your permission, we'd like to add two items to the agenda this morning. Item I two A would be a discussion regarding COVID-19 PTO. And I two B would be CARES Act reimbursement for the Board of Education.
Thank you, sir. All right, we have our annual CVB update presentation. And before you start, thank you so much for your, for the swag bags here. I don't know what's in them. I just hope it's not candy.
Not candy.
Okay.
Good morning. I'm Shelley Blackburn, the executive director of the Columbia County CVB. Great to be with you this morning to offer our annual update. I do have with me my associate director of sales and marketing, Ms. Ashley Swain. And so just want to say thank you for the wonderful folks that you have appointed to our Board of Directors. They have really guided our organization through a really strange year, I'll say. But I think several of them were planning to be here this morning. I don't see them quite yet, but thank you all for appointing them. I'm just going to jump, jump straight to it. These are actually numbers from 2018, which is the latest data that we do have. So this is pre-COVID numbers, but you'll see that tourism in Columbia County generated over $157 million in 2018. Contributed to nearly 1,300 jobs. Because of that money spent here by visitors, each Columbia County household saved $233 that year. And some lodging data to share with you today. Obviously, we have been living through a pandemic, and so it has been a very tough time for the hospitality industry. That hotel motel tax collection has been down by 24%. Occupancy down by 11.5, and again, revenue per available room down 24%.
Is this year to date? Is this fiscal?
This is fiscal.
From?
July 1.
To June 30. Okay.
Correct. So we run the data that way for you. But I'm happy to report that the months of July and August, we have seen occupancy over 60%, which is really the number that we like to see. And so occupancy is trend up, and we are looking much better and faring much better than other folks around Southeast and throughout the state of Georgia. And well, as you all know, we serve as your destination marketing organization. It's our job to go out and tell the world about this wonderful place, and we do that through a lot of different ways. But you'll see our website, last year, we had nearly 90,000 page views, which was an increase of 131% year over year. And our average time on site also increased by 44 seconds, and our organic traffic increased by 190%. Social media, our audience grew by 9% on Facebook and 24% on Instagram. And our paid digital campaigns, which ran for just nine months, we paused those during the months of March, April and May because people were not traveling. So it didn't make sense to entice them to do so. So this is a nine-month campaign. But you'll see nearly 1.5 million impressions through our paid digital. And our clicks to our website increased by 24%. Our e-newsletter subscribers increased by 42%. Our visitors guide, the digital views increased by 200. Request for the mail copy by 60%. So as you can see, people were most definitely looking for things to do during this year. One of the most exciting marketing initiatives that we launched this year was the Serene 18 paddle trail. And so what this is, is a passport program. You each have one in your bag as well. But it highlights four different routes that you can paddle. That's Clarksville Lake, Betty's Branch, Stallings Island and the Augusta Canal, all of which of these routes start at county parks. So it made perfect sense for us to package all of these to create one attraction. And so it has been a tremendous success. And the way that it works is you complete a trail, you get a stamp in your passport. You'll see each location has its own stamp. And then once you've received all four, you come to our office, you show us that you've completed the passport, and you get the. Like to show you our marketing video.
I love this video.
Eighteen square miles of water trails, wildlife had ever been, a lake, a river and a canal. This is the Serene 18. Clarksville Lake, Betty's Branch, Stallings Island and the Augusta Canal. Time to stir up some sweet emotions. We are on the shore of Wildwood Park, our first stop of the Serene 18. And this is Clarksville Lake. Seventy-one thousand acres of liquid awesome. This man-made phenomenon is hugged by longleaf pines and packing some sweet wildlife. Moving on to Betty's Branch, might want to pack a lunch. At seven miles, you can spend all day soaking up some cosmic rays on these two routes. And if you time your paddle just right, you can partake in a siesta fiesta on the sandbar before the waters rise. Benny, let's cruise. All right. The beautiful Savannah Rapids. A mighty fine drop point down river from our next joint, Stallings Island. As you launch and paddle towards the island, steer clear of the waterfall. Those headgates are very close. And keep your eyes peeled for wildlife. Whoa, Jack, get a load of that donkey. Now remember, Stallings Island is a historic landmark, so you have to keep your feet in the boat at all times. But man, is it gorgeous. Am I right? The Augusta Canal, our last stop. Assemble group tandem and take it solo. This trail is pure relaxation. The canal is a one-way trip, so if you need to return to the headgates, you can snag a ride on the shuttle mobile. That's all, folks. A POV, that's your DIG. From creeks to islands to waterfalls. So branch out and take the Serena route. Your adventure awaits.
Very good.
That's excellent. He's not running for office, is he?
He's not.
Okay.
I thought it was Brad Owens.
Don't say that.
So as you can see, it has been highly successful. We have printed 6,000 of these passports just since. Sorry about that. And so we have mailed out over 2,000 of those. 75% are out of the market, mainly the Atlanta and the Charlotte, North Carolina area. So it's certainly appealing to people who are wanting to hop in the car for a weekend, drive down and do something fun as a family. And you'll see our Facebook followers were at nearly 1,800 and nearly 1,300. Our impressions on social media just since June are just shy of 1 million. And the targeted digital impressions at 352,000. The page views to our website alone since June are nearly 43,000. 208,000 people have watched this video in completion, all two and a half minutes of it. So that's huge for us. We have had 80 folks complete the trail and actually redeem their T-shirt. And again, the majority of those being from Atlanta and Charlotte. We've had some great features. We've been on Explore Georgia on three separate occasions. We were featured in Only in Georgia and some great local coverage through WJBF and WAJ as well. And as you all know, we took over the visitor center operations as of July 1, and we have relocated our offices there. We're currently working to modernize the visitor center and create a unique and different visitor experience. It will take some time, but we are in the phase one of that right now. But if you haven't been down to visit us, we would love for you to do so, and we do love our new offices. Signage and wayfinding, I feel like I've been talking about this for years, but we are, I'm happy to say, in the final phase. We are waiting on the construction documents, and hopefully we'll be going to procurement in a couple of weeks or months, I hope. So next time we talk about this, it should be when they're going to be installed, I would hope. An estimated economic impact. So again, this was a really strange year, but we did book, sponsor or service 25 events this year. Only 15 of those occurred due to COVID. They were rescheduled or canceled outright. And so the economic impact for this last fiscal year, we estimate to be at just over 1 million for those events. Well, looking ahead, what's up for us? So last year, we talked about the Department of Economic Development Tourism Product Development Team. They were scheduled to come in in May and do an assessment of our community. And that has now been rescheduled to a virtual visit, which will take place in January. We should have a document in hand 90 days later, which we will provide to you all at that time. And Serene 18, we're going to continue with this campaign. It's not an event-based attract. It's actually an attraction, so it's not an event. You'll continue to see that. We want it to become a part of our community, something that people come here to see and to do. We'll continue with that, updating our visitors guide this year, and again, continuing with event meeting recruitment and our sponsorship program. So we're working really hard right now to rebook that business that was lost this year. And we will begin the development of a land trail program, very similar to Serene 18. So we've had a lot of folks from the cycling community reach out to us and say, this is great. Can you do this for cycling and for the land trails? So we know it will take a while. It took us two years to get Serene 18 actually completed and out to market. So we will begin phase one of putting together something like this for all the amazing land trails that we do have here in the area. And last but not least, we will be updating our strategic plan this year. But as you can see, it's been a really busy, again, a strange year, but very successful for us as well. Any questions? I'd be happy to take them at this time.
I don't have any questions.
No, thank you.
Good job.
You and Ashley, Tara, y'all have done a fantastic job with extraordinary circumstances this year. And I really, I tell you, I called John the first day I saw that commercial on Facebook. My wife actually found it and called me into the room, and I told him what an amazing job that was, that we need to make sure that we saw it. I think you guys, the whole team's done a fantastic job. I know it's been very difficult in your industry. Jay Mark Walter's a friend and state, and I know that what every CVB is going through. I'm very, very, very proud of the job y'all have done. Thank you.
Very much. That means a lot. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, if it's out of place, tell me. We got a plum the other day from Money Magazine to dovetail with what she has to tell us.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and we're in the process of preparing that press release now, but I guess it's late enough in the morning. We can discuss that, that Evans, Georgia has been named the number one place to live in America by Money Magazine. That announcement will be just a couple of hours away officially, but we did get that information, and we are very excited about that. And we'll be publicizing that. I believe the chairman's going to put out a press release in a little while discussing that. So kudos to Shelley and her group and our staff here, and we're going to be putting out some additional information about that. We're very excited about that. We continue to be a wonderful community and have great quality of life, and this is a great example of it.
Collection of a lot of hard work. Thank you, sir. Into debate agenda, we have Community and Leisure Services. Mr. Luton, you want to lead, sir?
Thank you. This first item is for a donation for animal services in the amount of $25,000 from Elizabeth Halter.
Move to consent quickly.
Yeah.
Or she changes her mind second.
She's been a big supporter of.
Obviously.
Is she here?
No, my understanding, she made this donation right before she was going to start living in and assisted.
Oh, God bless her.
But we have talked about ideas of ways to recognize this, so we're kicking around some ideas.
Quickly, gentlemen, before.
Already did.
All right, so moved. All right, and next, sir?
2020 NAI men's soccer national championship. This event was scheduled for last spring in Irvine, California. Excuse me. Due to COVID, all the championships were forced to move to the fall, or excuse me. It was booked for the fall, and because of COVID, moved to the spring. The facility in California was not available in the spring. It's actually a professional soccer stadium. So NAI, who we've built a relationship with, approached us and asked if they could move this championship here to Blanchard Woods Stadium. So we said, yes, absolutely. Started working through the contract with them. It will be 10 teams, 10 men's teams staying here, you know, up to six nights each. So we think a conservative estimate of economic impact is in the $650,000 range. We think it'll, we think it will certainly maybe even be higher than that. So this is a tremendous impact event. It's a prestigious event. We're excited about the opportunity to host this. If approved, we would then have the NJCCA Women's National Championship coming in two weeks after this, or maybe three. So really good back-to-back events with significant hotel overnight stays at Blanchard Woods Park. Staff would recommend approval.
Move to consent.
Second.
So moved. Good work. Next, sir?
Glamping. So this is, this is an idea that Shelley and the CVB.
Is this a real word? I'm just asking.
It is.
This is a real word, and it's a, and it's a real thing that people are very excited about. And Georgia Glamping does, has been very successful doing this on Lake Lanier. So they approached us along with the CVB and basically want to lease out spaces from us at Wildwood. So we've identified four lower utilized camping areas out there for them to, for them to lease for a year, and they, they pay us like they're renting the space. So we've rent all four spaces for the rest of the year at $25 a night, whether they, whether they rent them or not. So it's really a risk-free.
Is it glamorous camping? Is that what glamping is?
Yes, so it's a three-night minimum stay at 100, somewhere around $150 a night. So Georgia Glamping comes in and they set everything up, the tents, the beds, the sheets, the Keurigs, refrigerators, all that stuff, air conditioning. Yes, there's air and there's, and there's heat. I did notice on their website that it says they can't guarantee that there won't be bugs, so that must be a complaint that they get.
Will they be providing generators, or do we have hookups?
We have, we have the power needs.
Okay.
Covered in those spots. Yep.
So this is, this won't take away from folks, though, that who want to rent it. I mean, we're always.
No, it just, these are, these are, I believe even one or two of the spots are newly created that we don't even use. And then two are existing campsites, I believe, that haven't, aren't prime spots that people like. So Georgia Glamping is very confident that they're going to do well with these. I mean, I think they wanted up to six. We said, you know, let's start with four and see how that goes. Staff would recommend approval.
Looks like modified yurts. Is that what?
Pretty much. We've, we've looked into doing some yurts ourself, and of course, we wouldn't do the bed service and coffee.
I don't know, at 125 bucks a night, we might consider it. Move to consent.
Second.
So moved. Thank you. It looks very nice. Next is Evans Town Center, sir?
Yeah, so our playground surface at Evans Town Center Park that just gets so much use is in pretty desperate need of being resurfaced. So we drew up a bid, an RFP, and only got one proposal back. And we went back and looked at it. We think we're a little too specific on some of our specs. We think we can loosen some of those up and still get a good, safe surface that we're looking for and get a much better price. So we'd like to reject this single bid and put it back out and see if we can do a little better.
This is required of us? We, we have to vote on a rejection like this?
Yes, you would have to, yeah, you would have to take action to formally reject the bid. If we put it out there and we only got one bid back, you either have to order or reject it.
Okay. With school back in some form, is there traffic on this park down anyway?
I don't think so. I don't have any statistics, but every time I go out there with my three, it's packed. So I would say, if anything, we've seen more outdoor use, I think, during and throughout the COVID.
But it's still safe. It's still safe.
Yeah, this, this has been a need for a while, actually, to have this resurfacing of the playground done. But this is, yeah, I think we can do better than I. Move to consent, the rejection.
Second.
No moves. We have fire and emergency services?
This item this morning is renewal of our Cardiotronics Inspection and Preventative Maintenance Plan. It's split between fire rescue, AEDs, defibrillators, as well as risk management covers the 50 that are throughout the county campuses. We did get a 12% discount annually if we looked at three years. So we've worked that out, so it's a bit of a savings over our previous years. This is the only company that will actually come out and do the work. They come on site and take the AEDs and make sure that their algorithms that determine and deliver the shocks are working appropriately. All other companies require you to mail them in one at a time, which takes them out of service, and you have to, the cost of shipping makes this the, the best price and the best service. So we'd recommend approval.
Move to consent.
Second.
Just one question. Are these the newer units that have, the older generation just had finite discharges? Then you had to replace them. Are these the newer units that have?
We have a mix of, of the old FR twos and threes. Of course, you don't want to get them from that company anymore, so, and you can't.
So you're replacing those. Okay.
So we've replaced them with ZOL.
All right, sir. So moved. Thank you. Thank you for that information. Okay. Justice Senator?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'll take that.
Yes, sir.
So this is a projector replacement for courtroom four. It's $3,036.11. We do have a contract with DB Integrations, and they are the ones that would actually be doing this, and they checked it and recommended that it be replaced. This is one of those situations we talked about kind of prior to budget where we have, we have money in contingency, but there is no, there's no funding for this particular project. So IT didn't have a contingency for it. The Justice Center doesn't have its own budget. Sheriff's Office doesn't have a budget for it. So it's one of those things that just kind of falls out there by itself. So the board directed me when we had items like this, instead of having a contingency that we could do, that you wanted to see each contingency item coming back. So staff's recommending approval of $3,036.11 be transferred from the contingency line fund, line code, rather to fund the projector replacement in courtroom four.
Could we surplus one of those old-school overheads instead? I'm sure there's a lot of those lying around.
Maybe so.
Move to consent.
The grease pencil?
Second.
All right, so moved. Got the added items, sir?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. First item you have for your consideration is COVID-19 PTO. As you know, from March 18th to April 24th, we were, we had an official closure of the county due to COVID-19. However, several mission-critical employees continue to work. This board did approve a PTO buyout or buyback on April 21st, where we allowed the employees to sell back 50% of that COVID PTO. Now we're getting close to the end of the year, and we have a lot of employees that have not been able to take the additional time off, and I think it was our intent to not have them lose that time. Very fortunately, the county is recipient of CARES Act funding, and the federal government has, has sent, made available money. And our, our staff, Ms. Reese and her staff, have worked very diligently to make sure Columbia County got our entire allotment of that money, a little, little over $7 million. So we do have that money in the bank now, and the intent of that money was to be able to go towards these kind of expenses. So staff is recommending that we allow the employees the opportunity to sell the remainder of their COVID PTO, and that would be the other 50%. Or if they've taken some and they have some left that they want to sell, they'll be able to do that. Or third, if they want to retain it for future use during this calendar year, they can certainly do that and take the time off instead of being paid for it. But we are not amending or not asking to amend our policy as it relates to carrying over PTO this year. So we will still remain under the same policies, but people will have the opportunity to get all of their COVID PTO as a result of this. So staff recommends the approval of that secondary phase of that buyback program and that it be funded from the CARES Act reimbursement.
The bottom line is it's either cash it out, use it or lose it.
That's correct. That's correct. Unless you, that's, that's correct. Yeah. The carryover will be the same carryover that we've had every year. You'd have to meet certain criteria. So there may be a case where somebody could do that, but yes, Mr. Chairman, it'd be cash it out, use it or lose it for COVID.
Is this, will we use this as supposedly another round of CARE Act?
Oh, yeah. So I'm glad you mentioned that. So I just got notification.
Will be reimbursed from the CARE Act.
Yeah, so we've actually, this money is a reimbursement already because we've already submitted some of these things. So this money that we have currently would be for this type of thing. However, we have additional items that we need to submit. Out of that $7.2 million, that did not cover all of our expenses. So I got notification this morning from ACCG that the U.S. Treasury is working with the state of Georgia to make another, for counties and cities, it'd be probably somewhere in the neighborhood of $300 million. If it's done by capita, per capita, again, Columbia County could be looking at another $7 million. So we'll, we'll work hard to get that, and I understand that they may be expanding some of the, some of the things that we can use that money for. I had a conversation with Blackburn about that, about the CVB, about the possibility of CVB qualifying for some of these funds. So we'll work very diligently to do that. So I just got that notification today. Right now, it's up to the governor. So the federal government has already given the money to the state. The state can elect to keep all of it, or they can give some of it to the local government. So we're lobbying the governor's office and OPB right now to make sure we get our fair share.
Good work. Move to consent.
Thanks, sir.
Second, when everyone else is struggling to figure out what they're going to do, I think that, or guidance on this, and the counties have done their very best for our staff, and I hope.
I agree.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, I totally agree. You have another?
Yes, sir. One other item for your consideration. During the CARES Act reimbursement, we were notified that boards of education were not allowed to participate directly in the program, but that they could be a sub-grant recipient of the funding if they had expenses. So we worked with our local board of education and, and got all of their expenses together, and we have those expenses. Now, I will tell you, the money we received so far is not a result of what we submitted on behalf of the Board of Education, because we submitted all of our expenses first. However, we, we do think that when phase two rolls around, we'll actually get reimbursed for this too. But we feel like it's prudent to go ahead and move forward with reimbursing the Board of Education, since they were out that money, and this is money that's coming back to our community, whether we use it or the board use it or whatever. So in this particular case, we had a total of $557,641.62 in eligible expenses that were submitted by the Board of Education. We submitted on their behalf, I'm sorry, we've not submitted, that we're holding on their behalf, that we will submit. But I'm recommending that we go ahead and disperse that $557,641.62 of the recently received CARES Act funding that we've already received to the Board of Education to help offset their cost to the response to the, to the COVID pandemic.
I support this. I just want to understand a little bit. So they had to go through us. We, as a county government, we were the only institution allowed to apply for the CARES Act funds.
Or cities.
Or cities, yeah.
Yes.
So Board of Education had to apply through us. Again, I support it completely, but do we have a contractual obligation?
No. So many Board of Educations did not apply at all. Many counties and. Many counties and cities did not work with their board of education, or they didn't say, you know, we're going to give you some of this or give you an opportunity to even do this. So the way the CARES Act worked, there was no funding specifically for the boards. It was totally up to each community. But with our relationship with our board of education and the relationship that this board has with the board of education, we just felt like it was prudent to try to give them some of that money back since it was an eligible expense. I don't think many counties around the state did it.
To my knowledge, they're not. And in my capacity on the state board of education, the state board of education, I know that we're trying to disperse our limited CARES funds throughout all those local boards of education. And I wasn't even aware of this, but I enthusiastically support us doing so. Thank you for working with them.
Yeah, I just want to commend, I just want to commend county staff, as well as the school board staff, working together. And to me, this is one of the reasons that Evans is the number one place to live in, in the world. And get the U.S.
All right, yeah, it's just a mark of our relationships that we have with the board of education, our sheriff, all the way around.
Right, and so I'm very pleased that we're able to work with them and be able to make this happen. Move to consent.
All right, so move.
Second.
Second, whatever.
I want to be on the record as the move on that one, so.
Mr. Driver, do we have any legal matters? Okay, that's very good. Thank you, sir. Fire and emergency staff reports?
For your information, I have our year-to-date and August-run report, as well as our current budget. I'd be glad to hear your questions.
No questions?
None. Don't wait, how many cats in a tree? I always look at that one. 330 potential.
All right. We have any public comment or commissioners' comments? Nothing in the executive session? We adjourn this meeting at 9:01.
9:05? We'll commence with the development and planning?
Everyone, please take a seat. I want to call to order the proposed Development and Planning Services Committee for Tuesday, September 22nd. Having already dispensed the invocation and the pledge, we do have a full committee in full quorum. I'd like to have approval of the minutes from the August 25th meeting, if possible.
Second.
Moved. Anything added to this agenda?
Not to my knowledge, Mr. Chairman.
All right. We do have a presentation, a timely presentation.
Mike is going to do that before our stormwater.
Yeah, I asked him if this was planned before the weekend, or if this was a sudden thing, or?
Just a coincidence.
Well, it's, again, timely. Mr. Honore, please, the floor is yours.
Okay, hope everybody's doing well this morning. Columbia County participates in the National Flood Insurance Program Community Rating System. As a condition of the CRS, the county must recertify annually. Part of the annual recertification is documentation on the county's Hazard Mitigation Flood Plan Process Report. So this year, we were able to complete three projects that are on our report. The first project is the Columbia Industrial Lining Project. You can see on here where this was a 72-inch line that runs under Columbia Industrial Drive. It was badly corroded, rusted out. It was causing sinkholes on the shoulder of the road. Due to the location, we lined this pipe with a 72-inch liner. I brought an example of this liner, if anybody wants to see it.
Roll it.
We were able to, we were able to complete this project without closing the road, without doing any open cuts on the road, and not closing the road down. We were performing everything on the shoulder of the road using that lining process. You can see here where the liner was inserted, blowed up and being steamed here, and also the, what it looks like after it's cured. One good thing about that liner is it's a seamless liner, so there's no joints underneath that road anymore. We don't have to worry about any kind of infiltration. Even if the metal pipe that's there rust away and vanishes, that liner is its own pipe now. Hopefully ever again. We're also able to haul in 120 tons of ripper after we stabilize the parts over the road. Next project was a Shalford Place culvert and stream rehabilitation project. We replaced 160 foot of existing 16-inch MP. That comes from the Moss Creek Pond that charges into the culvert to Shalford Place that were very undersized. See here, the 18-inch pipes that were, that were in these culverts. We were able to go in, and there's a 16-inch pipe that we laid in the house that's coming out off the Moss Creek Pond. We were able to come in and put a 16-inch equivalent arch culvert in these driveways water and restabilize the stream.
Michael, explain to me, extreme layman with no, the arch, the idea of the arched culvert as opposed to round?
Well, the reason we had to use the arched culvert, there wasn't enough elevation for a full round pipe. We had of the driveway would have been arched up and very terrible, so we used.
So it's really just spacing? It's not necessarily the design is any better, or?
No, the design's not any better. It's just a matter of not having the cover, put a full 16-inch pipe in there.
Gotcha.
The third project that we were able to complete is the Mullins Pond dredging project. Here, 2006 Mullins Pond Forbey was built to collect the sediment before it goes into Mullins Pond and eventually to the lower areas leading to the river. We were able to come in, dredge this pond. You can see on the right where the dredging done, and we dredged 7,500 cubic yards of sediment out of that forbey. Questions?
Questions?
That's just the tip of the iceberg, what Mike and his crews have done over the last year. Those are three of the big projects he worked on, so.
How long did it take to get the permit to do that pond, to dredge that pond?
That was a good story. So we fought and fought for several years, probably, what, two or three years we fought, Katie Beth, with the Corps on that? Then we finally won, we convinced them.
But it was built for that, right?
Right, so we finally won by convincing them we didn't have to have their permit to work on our pond. Job's just that.
Very good. And also, I know that short of a hurricane or tropical storm, the phone calls we get are much less now. So thank you, guys, you're doing a great job.
I think, looking at our work, three projects you've outlined are at $850,000. Nice to be able to tell those people to keep emailing us that we never use their $18 storm fees to, for any purpose.
Yes, sir.
I don't think they quite understand the size of these projects or the costs. Thank you, thank you, guys, for all the work y'all do. It is one of the more thankless jobs in the county. You pretty much only get negative feedback. So I want you to know that we greatly appreciate everything you guys do.
I appreciate it.
Yeah, I have to comment, we have, you know, Mistletoe, you know, Mistletoe Road gave out, and you guys were there the next day. It was amazing work and progress on it.
I will say, talking about being a thankless job and everybody always complaining, of late, since Mike has taken over and Katie Beth's taken over her side, and we've restructured all that, recently, we've gotten a lot of calls from residents very complimentary of our staff and stormwater and the job they do. When they put something back, it's better than it was before they started. And for people to take the time to compliment staff is, usually means that they did a really, really good job, which, I mean, I know they always do. But we've gotten more and more of those. I've probably gotten a dozen, you know, this year, compliments from Mike and his staff, and Katie Beth and her staff, and what stormwater's doing, so that's just good.
That's, I'm very glad to hear that, that you're getting recognition. And we, on occasion, do see some of that, but I hope you're seeing more of it.
Luckily, we have a good group below me that completes the work.
Thank you very much. You guys should answer the phone, Columbia County Stormwater, we don't make the rain.
We just pipe it, clean it up.
Yeah, we just clean it up. All right, thank you. So having moved on from the presentation, there's nothing on consent agenda. We'll go straight into new business and Schlachter.
Thank you, sir. The first one we have for you is our 2020 CRS Annual Recertification. In order to maintain our CRS classification, we must do a recertification packet. This does require the signature of the chairman on our documents. Staff's recommend approval.
Move to consent.
Second? Second, yeah, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, yes.
All right, so move, next?
I want to ask Mr. Prather to come up for these next three items. He's been working on these.
Morning, sir.
First up for your considerations is a Georgia Power proposal to provide lighting at the plaza. This is Princeton exit to the parking garage down Market Street. Plaza Park, actually Plaza Park. Staff recommends approval of this contract. Cost of $7,287.54.
Move to consent. Are these decorative in any sense?
It's a mix.
There's no image, I didn't.
It's a mix of, they're decorative lights, similar to Main Street, as well as some parking lot.
Kind of a black wrought iron appearance?
Black wrought iron, has the area to hang.
Banners, banner poles.
Great. All right, second?
Second, yes, it's so good.
Second item up is a Wildwood Park Area 1 bathhouse renovation. Not for bid. Continental Construction was the low bid at $284,000. This project is a much-needed project that we identified with services. Provides a total gut and renovation of an 18-inch bathhouse, also house for an addition for accessible shower, restroom area, and parking. I think this may go along with your clamping.
The reason it says a parent low?
I think that's just verbiage that procurement uses.
It is, until they go through the whole bid packet to make sure that everything is right. So we look at the number, but then we need to make sure that all, everything they put in there adds up to that number. I will say, on this particular project, this is one of those things where, you know, we're constantly out looking for ways to improve the county. And this was one of those things where staff walked in the restroom and said, you know what? I wouldn't use this if I were staying here, which is not Columbia County standards. So we immediately started going through the process of, you know, these renovations and trying to take care of that. But it's just another example of us catching it before we get complaints about it and really making it up to Columbia County standards.
Move to consent.
Second.
Thank you very much.
Third item I have is a professional services contract with Nick Dickinson Architects, Dickinson Architects. This is for the farmer's market piece of Plaza Park. So initially, we had separated this project into two separate projects to allow for the parking Plaza Park, which is adjacent to the PAC. Needed this parking for the PAC to open on time. So we took the building structure out of the project because of the. We've now gotten Plaza Park within budget and allotted to this project. So this is the design of the farmer's market Plaza Park.
So 70 grand just to design a pavilion?
Yes, we received some additional proposals on this project and out-of-town architects, as well as in-town, and.
It's about a million dollar. Much like a yurt.
It's about a million-dollar project, so that ends up being about 7%, which is.
Actually, it's a million and a half, so.
Yeah, right, that's right, that's right.
It's an open-air market with some restrooms and storage.
So 6.5%, 6%.
Once again, I'm sorry, there's no images, trying to, in relation to the PAC, if you're looking down?
If you're looking down Market.
It's going to be on the left, right? On the right?
PAC is on your left, this will be on your right. It'll be directly across the street drop-off area.
Okay.
Move to consent.
Second.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Prather. Development Services.
All right. First item we have for your considerations, alcohol beverage license for Harlem Party Package LLC. Applicant has provided all the information for a, to sell beer, wine, and to sell spirits for off-premise consumption at 340 East Millivale Road. They have provided all the information and have hopefully decide. With staff recommends approval.
Second.
Second. That may be the only one in the county that still has the red ball on it.
Before you even, the following one on our work, the Sprint Store that he's about to bring up, the item is, it's listed as, in our work, as licensed to sell beer and wine for premise consumption. That's, Ms. Print, we've already had that discussion with the owner and verified with our permitting. It is off-premise.
Right.
Right. And that item is for Sprint Food Store, Inc., LLC, doing business as Sprint Foods, number 733. And they have applied for a business license to sell beer and wine for off-premise consumption at 1325 Appling Harlem Highway. And they have provided all the proper information, and staff recommends approval.
Move to consent.
Second.
Thank you, sir.
And the last one we have is alcohol beverage license for Dea and Ria LLC. The applicant has provided the application for to sell beer, wine, and distilled spirits for off-premise consumption at 6697 Washington Road. They have provided all the proper information and posted the site, and staff recommends approval at the October 20th DOC meeting.
Move to consent.
All right. Thank you very much, sir. Any other business for this committee? Seeing none? Legal matters, sir? Usually a good thing. Staff reports. Attached is the monthly August 2020 Planning Department workload, and also the plan and review workload. Those are at your review, and staff recommends approval as information only. I approve it as information only. Questions?
None.
Next?
All right. Next, we have the August 2019, 2020 Development Services Monthly Report. I want a copy of that that's attached for your information.
Any questions about this?
All right. And the next one we have is the August 2020 Development Services Financial Report. A copy of that is attached for your information for the.
On budget?
Questions?
Final reports?
All right. The last one is the temporary alcohol permits for September 2020, and a copy of that is attached for your information.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Prather. Any Commissioner of Public comments? Seeing none. I see no reason to continue this committee. We are adjourned.
Sir. Thank you, gentlemen.